All right, that opens up which means our Facebook is live, our call will begin in order. It will first be the fourth part of our business, uh, fans of pledge allegiance, songs with, uh, identification from Alderman Park, and then go to the side. Let me do this first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Father, we just thank you so much for this time of year, Lord, for the time that we can just stop and concentrate on you and your birth and amending, Lord. Uh, thank you for each and every person here tonight, the families represented, David, our mayor, and the, uh, and the board members and our department heads, Lord. Thank you for this great city that we get to live in, and this great county that we get to live in, and this great state that we get to live in, Lord. Just, uh, just ask you blessings on each and every person here in our town as we, uh, as we end up 2023 and head into 2024, Lord, in your name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here this evening. Um, we will begin now with the, uh, official agenda and approval, um, with the consented items, and noted that Alderman Sistrunk will not be in this evening, Ms. Harden, so, um, Alderman Carver, any changes to the agenda or the consented items?
No, ma'am.
All right, uh, Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Brooks, start second.
Second.
I missed that, Alderman Rupp, second from Alderman Rupp, thank you so much. Uh, um, all those that have ever please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I started to go into a roll call without saying it either, so, thank you very much. All right, so, um, I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the minutes of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Second's consideration of the minutes of the November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Uh, under airport, we have request approval of the lease agreement between Titan Aviation and the city of Starkville for a second jet A refiller truck at a zero lease cost per month basis. Under engineering, we have consideration of permission to advertise for term bids for street improvement related items, including asphalt milling, striping, and pavement preservation. Two is consideration of accepting the base bid, alternate one and alternate two, from R and J Construction Company in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents, or the twenty twenty-three roadway basin surfacing program project and authorization for the mayor to execute a construction contract with the low bidder. Human resources, we have consideration of the approval of the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule for the city of Starkville, and if the governor of the state of Mississippi designates additional days as paid holidays by proclamation, the mayor may designate such additional day, days as paid holidays for eligible employees. Request authorization to hire Brian Sings as an intern for the Starkville Utilities Department. Request authorization to hire Alexandra Nash as a certified police officer. Request authorization to hire Gabriel Steenwick as a code enforcement officer. Request authorization to hire Frank Whitman as a utility locator technician in the Starkville Utilities Department. Request authorization to hire Stephen Brasher and Ryan Ezel as commercial drivers in the sanitation and environmental services department. And request authorization to hire Brian Flaherty, Stephen Miller, and Darian Rivera as non-certified firefighters. And under utilities, we have accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number two, two zero, two two dash nineteen from Trans Armor, Inc. to purchase a ten dash one, to purchase ten one hundred KVA pad mount transformers in the amount of seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars. And that completes the consent items.
Thank you, mayor.
Most welcome, it was my pleasure. Uh, and then under announcements and comments, under mayor's comments, what I wish to do is remind everyone that tomorrow, no, Thursday, the Clyde, is Thursday, the Clydesdales are coming. It is, it's Thursday, right? Yes, Thursday, the Clydesdales are coming, they're gonna set up in front of the Renaissance Bank at four thirty, and then they will, they will, uh, come down Lampkin and then go up, up Washington and then back down Main Street. They did it a couple of years ago, and it was wonderful, it was very festive, and, and I can't wait for us to see them again, because, you know, jingle bells and all the harnesses and stuff, it's just very, very Christmas-like, so I hope everyone will come out and, and see that. And we did have a really nice Christmas parade, the vice mayor served as the, uh, grand marshal of the parade, and it was, we had well attended, it was more than we had ever had before, so it was a really wonderful parade, and we look forward to doing it again, again next year. And aside from that, I don't have any other comments, anyone else? Alderman Carver, anything?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, uh, I don't really have any, uh, planned comments, I'll be very brief, and thank you for mentioning about the Christmas parade, it was a very, uh, great night, Starkville turnout, um, great excitement, great Christmas spirit, great Christmas joy, great Christmas fever, Starkville kicked off the Christmas season, and it's gonna usher Christmas on in here. And mayor, I just wanna say again, thank you and your team, um, this, the honorable Ms. Paige Watson, and the greatest partnership, and all those, um, who selected, uh, me as the, um, grand marshal, it is a monumental and a prestigious honor of my lifetime, I did not take it lightly, I had a, a fabulous time, Ms. Harden, it was, it was fantastic, I, my wife, uh, and is just so overwhelmed still, mayor, about what a great night we had, and I just wanna thank the entire, uh, Starkville family, um, Mississippi State University, and October Hall County, just for your utmost and genuine trust and confidence in me, and hopefully I didn't let anybody down, and I, I wanna close by saying this, uh, mayor, Ms. Paige Watson, I went down to visit her the next morning, I think that was on September the twentieth of twenty twenty-three, as she came to our board meeting, and she said, "Vice Mayor, Ms. Harden, I'm good, we're following instruction, I'm very obedient, okay?" And she said, "Honorable Vice Mayor, uh, Mr. Grand Marshal, I just want you to smile, wave, and greet." I said, "Yes, ma'am, I got it, I got it, I'm gonna do it." And we had a great night, and thank you, Starkville family, this is where we live, this is our home, the best city in the state of Mississippi, mayor, you, thank you.
You're very welcome, Vice Mayor, and well done.
You, you say the Clydesdale Thursday at four?
Thursday at four, they're setting up four thirty in front of the Renaissance Bank, but they'll be beginning the, the trek at six, I believe, so, and, and they're gonna go down Main Street, and then I think go all the way through the Cotton District, as I recall, come back around.
Okay.
But that map is actually on our website, I believe, uh, Mr. Clements, do you know if we've got that map on our, on our, a link on our website?
I don't know.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, I yield.
All right, thank you so much. All right, the next we have citizens' comments, anyone wishing to make any comments to the board now would be the time, you have three minutes, timed by Ms. Harden, and you are welcome to give us whatever comments and concerns you have. Mr. Turner, always nice to see you.
All right, all right, good evening to the mayor and board, my name is Adam Turner Ward Seven, um, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. All right, we just like to say that we enjoyed the parade, um, everybody, this time of year, we, we, we really been strung out, we're telling tell markers, and, um, if you know anything that we can do to try to help, because sometimes the tell markers call and make us miss important calls, because we get tired of constantly, uh, dealing with tell markers. The, uh, Brush Harbor Cemetery on University Drive, um, if we could, they put a no trespass sign, because, all right, it said that the dead be disturbed, that let's take pride in, in, in them, that, you know, if we cannot do one thing, if we just put a no trespass sign, at least letting the day will be at peace, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments?
I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna do my.
Alderman Carver?
Exit.
Certainly, and you're gonna do it tonight instead of the next, the last meeting? Okay.
I'll tell you what, I'm in a good mood, and I, um, I'm gonna do this, I didn't write any notes, so I guess I speak from the heart, I was laying them, um, not gonna cry or get embarrassed or anything, laying in bed the last couple nights, and I was thinking, uh, the way that Chris Latimer did is he got up on his last day, and he said kind things about everybody, and I thought that was a very classy thing to do, and he was very well-prepared, and I'm not at all, so, sitting there thinking, I could just talk for days. Henry Vaughn, I'll tell you, send me a Bible verse every morning, we started together years ago, uh, have material together on the board, and, uh, love you like a brother, Alderman Perkins, Vice Mayor Perkins, um, I was sitting there thinking, I said, "One of your strengths is you, you, you say dates, numbers, and facts off the top of your head, that, um, always well-prepared when you come in here, always a gentleman about town, everywhere he goes, he's well-respected, and, uh, I think being a grand marshal was fitting for you the other night, I saw you, and I said, "That's good." Um, mayor, I'll say that you and I have butted heads at times, and I tell people all the time, they say, "How would y'all work together if, if, uh, you know, y'all worked together?" And I said, "I think we'd work together fine," because, I sit there thinking, I said, this is kinda my standard answer across, I said, "I respect the mayor," I said, "Because," I should tell you what you think, and I think as older you get, and especially if you sat on that side of the table, when somebody speaks honesty and truth, you like it, under any circumstance, correct? And the older I get, I just appreciate when you tell, with the way you think about something, and you follow through with it, I admire that, takes good leadership skills. Burke, haven't worked with you that long, so, skip over your day. Everything, uh, Chris Latimer highly recommended you, and it's coming out to be true. Hank Beatty is a multi-term mayor, heard a lot about you from the extension service before getting to actually working with you, and it's all come to fruition, uh, you're a great asset to the board, and I highly respect you. Mike Brooks, who goes back from, uh, years ago on planning a zoning, and I guess I say about Mike, is everything he touches, he do well at it, and that's in aviation side, and then, uh, the P and Z, and then to this, everything you've done, I've always respected you. Uh, and then Jeffrey Rupp, I say keep being Jeffrey and keep, uh, promoting Starkville, everything I see you do on Instagram and Facebook, uh, obviously promoting the university and Main Street is an asset, so, also that, and then the department heads, over the years, we've got just the, the sampling of people here, the Edward and Daniel and Smiley and Chief and Nav and everybody back there, and Starkville, and y'all know this, is we, we rely heavily on our, uh, department heads. I, I'm not gonna name other people, Ms. Harden, especially, um, as an elected official, the people that we rely on day-to-day, is I, I, I tell people, I'm not a micromanager, I just call, if I call you, 'cause somebody called me, and a department head, y'all know, if you pick up the phone at any time, I guess the mayor runs it day-to-day, she knows that we got some of the best department heads in the world, so the city of Starkville, in my opinion, the next ten years, I, I do this on a campaign trail, I say, October Hall County and Starkville's on a bell curve, and I think we're, we're launching at this point, so it's gonna be good for whoever's sitting up on this side of the, or y'all's side of the table, this, end of this term and next term, uh, the groundwork's been laid, just for my, my four terms, with, uh, going back to Parker Wiseman was a big instrumental in a lot of things, Jeremiah Dumas, um, Eric Parker, I'm sure I'm missing, there's some really heavy hitter names in there that, uh, saw Starkville, that started that bell curve up, so I'm proud to call y'all friends, and I will tell you, and, uh, um, Ms. Sistrunk, I would say, I'm gonna say it now, don't say anything next meeting, but, um, her, obviously y'all know her CPA or financial skills are invaluable. Um, most cities in the state don't have the repertoire and the experience that's sitting here, you know, I see that when we go to MMA on our end on this, people often ask, "Why are y'all so successful?" I say, "'Cause there's diversity, and we're on a political fulcrum, every time you see an election, you don't know all the time who's gonna win, and that's a good thing, if, uh, if any, any side of anything controlled everything, it wouldn't be a, a good function in government." So, I always say Starkville's on a political seesaw, saw that in the county elections just recently, um, so I have one, a county supervisor, and we transition, and I'm gonna work with each and everyone, keep sending me, I wanted to say, keep sending me the, the daily Bible verses, send me, and I, you know, if y'all can, uh, if y'all need anything, let me know, I'm gonna get out of the way.
Are you gonna be here at the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna say, thank you for all your dedication.
I gotta say, I totally didn't look over to my right shoulder, but, um, Chief Battle's been instrumental in a lot of things, and has a lot of technology, technological advances in the past few, four, five years here, and then preceded by, obviously, Chief Nichols, so we've had our police and fire, life safety divisions, as far as I still think about all the time, and probably something best in the state, and I'm not just saying that, I mean, I live here so well.
Thank you, Alderman Carver.
That's for real. Uh, uh, at sixty-four years old, I'm starting, I'm starting slipping, um.
You missed one, Mr. Turner, you're back, okay.
Okay, I'm back, uh, I meant to say, but I, um, hello, I'm, uh, um, pray, pray mercy for Marviah Howard and my self, uh, Marviah lost his mom at eighty-six years old on Sunday, so I pray mercy for the Howard Turner family, uh, I think the funeral's supposed to be Saturday, this coming Saturday.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner, I was not aware of that.
Saturday.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board under citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close it for citizens' comments and move to public hearings, our first public hearing will be managed by, uh, Ms. Sarah Perez for the code enforcement, so, have we got, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna shut some lighting off so that you can, we can have the pictures and all the pictures over there, but, Joel, you got that up?
First, we have two oh one Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, three nine seven five nine, parcel number one five nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight dot zero one. As you can see by the deed, it is listed ownership as Dwight Price Hawk and Roberta Price Hawk on Lakeside Drive. My first inspection of the property was on September first at nine forty-eight AM.
Can we go back one slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I wanna make sure, since this is, I believe that's DW, not DEW, so let's make sure that we have the right, the right name on that, because I'm looking at the tax, the tax piece there, and I believe that's a DW. Under, under, underneath the name Roberta Price Hawk, and I believe that's straight DW, scroll, scroll down a little bit. There you go, right there.
That's a question.
I don't, I don't know, but I just wanted, want that to be noted, because the tax document would be the one there, okay? And your narrative is not controlling, but I just wanted it to make sure it was, it was clear in the, in the information, okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me go to the next slide.
This is the backside of the apartment building, it's visible where the roof has caved in, and it's been covered with plastic, and this is the front side as well, the same issues, it has caved in, and it's been covered with plastic. There is a gentleman that has been staying in the second unit and the first unit, he uses both units, because the back is so caved in, he only lives in that first part of the I sent the violation letter on September fifth, letting the property owner know that there was violations on the property. I did a second inspection on October sixteenth, after having no response from the property owner, and no change had been made. I sent a second notice of the violation on October se, twenty-seventh, and this, this violation letter was sent certified mail, and I have not received anything back from that, it was sent to the listed address of the owner. This is the notice of the public hearing sent on November ninth, posted at City Hall on November eleventh, as well as at the property on November eleventh, and the third inspection, showing that no changes have been made to the property. This is photos taken through a window on the front side of the property. On my final inspection of the property, no changes have been made. This inspection was done on November twenty-fifth.
I can ask a couple questions.
Uh, yes, Alderman, well, uh, do you have anything else you wanna say about?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Carver?
I guess, is this that road?
Ruth Road.
This is the next area that is just included in the recent annexation?
Yes.
I would just say it'd be, I think this is Ruth Road that cuts into the backside of the Highlands at the gate.
Yes.
And I know we were under a grace period maybe for a year.
It's been over a year.
And so, I don't know, I mean, I just be cognizant, these properties, if they're where I think it is, I've probably sat there like that fifteen years, so now they're included and it's new, but it's, the property owner's been properly notified.
He has been notified with three different letters, and I have not received any contact from him or, uh, return mail or anything.
Can you call him, I might know him perfectly?
I have attempted to call him on multiple different phone numbers that I've found.
We'll, we'll have an opportunity to hear from him.
Is he gonna come up and speak? I just wanna, I was gonna say, I guess, I was thinking, this is a different code enforcement issue than other, that this is newly annexed property, but, uh, I'll, I'll sit and listen, I yield.
Anyone else have any questions of Officer Perez? Did, did y'all, you just took pictures through the window, is that correct?
Yes.
Did, uh, the building inspector accompany you on any of those?
He did go out and look at the property, but not with me.
Okay, so, but he has looked at the property?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Chief, did you have something?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, anyone, anyone else before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, I'll open it as a public hearing, uh, Mr. Price Hawk, I see you in the audience, do you wish to come speak to this?
Can we turn those lights on?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, of course.
We got three more to go, haven't we? This has been a most interesting year for me. On January the twentieth, we found my wife had an aortic aneurysm that was leaking, we lost her eighty-four days later on April the twelfth. Then I started to get started again in September, and on September the twentieth, I had a triple bypass, so I've still got about three months of cardiac rehab before I can do any of this. But the biggest issue we got, I would like to get copies of those pictures, and I would like to remind the board of, in the Court of Appeals of the State of Mississippi, number twenty twenty dash C A dash zero zero six six two dash C O A, Walter P. O. Queeson versus the city of Starkville, Mississippi, and DeLynn Prue. This is where the Supreme Court ruled that going on the property taking pictures is a violation of the state constitution, and you have no evidence for court. Any comments?
Is that, is that your, is that what you wanted to say? We're not going to be commenting back and forth, I don't imagine. Do you have any questions?
Well, I want to tell you that, since she's got the pictures, uh, I had told, been told that a white lady had came on the property, and I didn't know who it was, but I do now, and, uh, the, the objective is to get the property all fixed up, but, and that's because it's costing me a lot, a lot of money with it's not being fixed up. But that's, the, the intent is to do that, but the bigger issue is the trespassing deal, that, uh, the Supreme Court is, that's a forty-two page ruling, and up until that point, my understanding was a game warden could go on property, but apparently there is a previous Supreme Court ruling, and they brought it up in this one, that even a game warden can't trespass on people's property.
Okay, thank you, sir. And that will be, uh, we've got four of your properties that are.
That's correct.
Four, so you, are you gonna wanna speak to each one of those pieces of property as we move forward?
Same thing applies.
Okay, that's what I felt like you'd say, okay, all right, but we'll still be going through the public hearing, okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this during the public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing? On, uh, the matter associated with two oh one Ruth Road, parcel number one fifty-nine J dash zero zero dash zero two eight point zero one. All right, seeing none, we'll close it as a public hearing, and, um, any questions? All right, I'm sorry, I see you first, I'll see you first, Alderman Beatty, so you go right ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask.
You wanna ask?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Price Hawk, would you come back up, so you'll be in the, you, you'll have the microphone, please?
Ms. Price Hawk, glad to have you with us, seeing you. If you were given some extended time, would you fix this apartment building up?
That's my intent.
Because I know you've had some, some bad luck, awful, with losing your wife and your, your health issues and stuff like that, uh, but this building can get bad all night, that's, that's years of neglect, and the conditions in which that man is living in are deplorable, and, um, I mean, sitting off the world with people, you know, and, and I know that you were not. And, I mean, sitting off the work with people, you know, and, and I know that you were not for the annexation, but it's, it's, we, it's annexed, that area's annexed, and it now comes under our zoning and code laws and things like that. And, I mean, I think the city will be consistent now in trying to, to make sure that, that buildings are brought up to code. And I, no one's trying to, and this board is not, and I, I don't speak myself, I guess, force anything down anybody's throat. But at the same time, and you know, that, it, it didn't get bad overnight. So that the photos that you're saying we trespassed on something, I guess brought to light the fact that this place is in deplorable condition, and it didn't get in bad shape overnight.
I agree.
And so, I guess my comment to that would be, as an, as a city official, I'd be willing to work with you, but only on the condition that you move forward as expeditiously as possible to try to get this thing up, up to code.
I am, I'm trying to work on all of it.
And give us some kind of plan as to how you'd do that.
Well, at, at this point, there's not much that can happen for three months, as long as I'm in cardiac rehab.
But, uh.
Because I'm not released to do full-time, so.
And I'm only speaking for myself. There's six other Aldermen in.
I get up about an hour, and go out and look at stuff, or check on stuff, and I go back, and I sit down for an hour, hour and a half, sleep or rest. And that's just part of, of what I've gone through.
Would you be, be contracting the work, or trying to do it yourself? That's.
Probably both.
Okay. May I yield? Thank you, sir. Thanks, man.
Mr. Priceock, do you have a contractor's license?
No.
Okay. Well, that's gonna, that would be an issue as well, in terms of you doing the work yourself, but we can go with that hurdle later. Alderman Carter. Alderman Carter?
I was gonna kind of echo what he said, and we know, I know your stance on the annexation and where we're at now, but probably the most gracious board's ever extended, probably six months that I've seen. People come up in all types of situations, and hardships and things, and, and so this board, at times, has granted a leniency for a little while. I don't know, in your case, if that's gonna be long enough, because in you, three months from now, you know, I don't think that's, that, if that's where I think it is, you know, it's in disrepair, I would, I would favor, I'd vote in favor of some type of six-month extension if it gets to that point. I might be in the minority. But, the second thing, and I'll just, to the city attorney on, on record, like, what he's talking about, the Queeson case going to the Supreme Court and all that, and these, is that admissible evidence, or those are photos of?
I've got to look at the case, but the photos taken on the outside would clearly be fine. The ones on the inside, maybe, there would be, could be a question on it. I don't, I don't, I'm familiar with the case, but not familiar enough to speak.
He, he has, he has a copy. We had a copy on the file.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Priceock.
It was, it was a picture on the outside at the Queeson, just what the Supreme Court ruled against, it was called, it went on the property period, they say, and I didn't know this till this, it is a constitutional thing, not a statute.
I'm gonna take a look at it, but I am, I'm comfortable that the way we do this process, from the outside, far away, is, is fine.
Also, we.
But I'll take a look at the case.
They told you, they said one of the Starkville codes is in violation of that and needs to be changed, and I don't know if it was or not. I haven't looked it up. But this was a most interesting, 42 pages to say you can't trespass is a lot of words.
Understand, and we will. Anyone at this end of the table, Vice Mayor?
Mayor Wood. I'm gonna follow your recommendation. You have a recommendation?
Well, I, I think we've got a little more discussion going, ma'am. I just wanted, I didn't want to look at the, only, only at that end of the table, so I just want to make sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty, did I see your hand?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Priceock, I know that some questions whether, you know, the, the state, Supreme Court's ruling on the, you know, whether we trespass, that kind of thing, but absent us taking pictures, there's no discovery of condition of that property. And that property continues, and continues on as a rental property and deplorable, and that's not what I described, in deplorable condition, living conditions, where the, this habit of, that has, not habit of, that hasn't, that has a tenant, an occupant in it, that can't, cannot live in, but part of that property. And so, that's, that's what we're, what I would be concerned about, and I would be willing, like Alderman Carter had mentioned, to, you know, give some extra time on that, if you could present us with a plan within X, X time, where that thing could be brought to code, you know, really, stuff that would get, make it habitable for, for, you know, for renters, that kind of thing. And that, but we just want to see that done. If you get that done, you're gonna put people in it, thing, you're gonna make, you, you rent those apartments. It's too good a location.
That's correct.
And you're gonna make money cash for that thing. That's too good a property. But anyway, let's try to work together on that, see, you know, I do want to work with you on that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I do know, it's been, April of 2022 was when we were approved for the annexation, so it's been a year, and gone on a year and a half. So, we deliberately did not, you know, go out into the annex territory to give everyone a chance to understand that, that you're now in the city, and that there are obligations that go with that, which include building codes, et cetera. And you're well aware of construction, because you're involved in the Seward District. I mean, you understand construction and engineering and all those things. So, I am disappointed that, that it hasn't been responded to, and that you haven't thought about improving the living conditions, particularly of the gentleman who is, is living there. I certainly was not aware of your loss, your, your personal loss, nor your health issues. But I don't think that, without a general contractor's license, you would be in a position to make the kind of improvements to the property that it appears that, that needs, certainly from the, the view that we see from the outside, from the pictures. So, you know, that would be an issue, because a contractor's license is necessary in order to do particularly commercial work. But I, I am certainly willing to give you, I think, I heard six months, and I didn't come in here being prepared to give you six months, because I do think that you have a, a strong knowledge of codes and building, and you clearly are interested in the legal aspects of things, so, but if, if six months would give you where you need to go to find a contractor to do the work, or to make whatever arrangements necessary to get it done, then I can see providing a six-month grace period. So you asked me for my, for my thoughts on it, that are, those are my thoughts. I'm willing to, willing to do that. But, you know, having a, having a board that would be willing to, to do that will take, you know, a majority of votes. Alderman Rupp.
Are we going to have to go through this process three more times?
Yes. Yes. Each, each one has a different address. Same tax parcel, but a different address. And because they're addressed differently, we need to do this in, in form, in a formal fashion, the four different times.
We can't take them as a whole after.
Well, I don't know. Because of the nature of the process, I would think that it would probably be most prudent to take them one at a time.
Because one building, four years, one.
Well, no, no, no. It's four different, it's four different elements of that same tax parcel.
I ask that, because if we look at all four of the properties, it may have some impact, I don't know what, but it could have some impact on what we eventually decide. So we make a decision on this one, and as we get down the road, it may change. That's the only reason I ask.
Well, if you would like to hold an abeyance, a vote on this one, I presume we could do that, and we can come back to it, if you want to listen to all four of them first. Anyone have any, any objections to listening to the four of them, and then coming back and make a determination or something? I don't think that's quite as clean and neat, but the, Alderman.
Are listening to all four of them tonight?
Yeah. Well, they're all four on, on, set for a public hearing tonight, so yes.
You just don't want to listen to that no more, right?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, we're gonna make a decision on this one, but there are three more, and we might see something in those that might impact our decision. So if we could look at all of them, and then make one motion, that that might, might be easier for Ms. Priceock, and it might make more sense to us. But I'm, I'm just, I'm not married to that, I'm just suggesting.
Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, I heard somebody comment.
Those four different buildings are four, we won't say any.
They're four different, four different types of issues. Same, again, same tax, same, no, same tax parcel, but different areas.
Four different units.
Four different areas. Yeah. What I'm, yeah.
I think, what I would say is the best practice, we can listen to all, all four, and then vote on each separately.
Yes. Well, you absolutely vote on each sep, each one separately, but we certainly can listen to all of them. That will inform your decisions.
You okay?
Okay. All right. Okay. Having said that, we've already closed the first one as a public hearing, which will have a public hearing on each one of them. So if you would, Officer Perez, come up and make the presentation on the next, on the
This one is going to be 245 Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, 39759. This is the deed showing ownership of the property. The first inspection was on September 1st at 9:46 a.m. As you can see, during this inspection, I just took photos of the roof that is caved On each side, there is areas of the roof that is caved in. It has complete overgrowth around the majority of the outside of the, the house. On September 5th, I sent an initial letter of the violation, notifying the property owner of the issues.
Let me interrupt, just momentarily. This was a nuisance violation, not a dilapidated structure violation, is that correct?
This first, this first initial letter on all of them is a general nuisance, letting him know of the violation. On October 16th, I did a second inspection, showing that no improvements have been made to the property or the structure. On October 27th, I sent a second letter to the property owner, notifying him that it was changing to be a 211911 case. On November 9th, I sent certified mail, notifying the property owner of the public hearing. On November 11th, I posted at City Hall, as well as on the property. And took third inspection photos, showing that no changes have been made to the property. On November 25th, I did a final inspection, and once again, no improvements have been made to the property, and no contact attempts were made by the property owner.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any, any questions of Ms. Perez? Officer Perez, I apologize. No questions? All right. I'll open it as a public hearing. Mr. Priceock, you might want to address this one as well, but I'll open it as a public
And again, I'd like a copy of the pictures. That house, I'm probably going to take out. That's a, house is about 1930. It was originally where Hawthorne is, and it was actually cut in half and moved out to Highway 82. And then, when they expanded Highway 82 and made it four-lane, we bought it and moved it over there. But it's not a very good piece of property. But again, we have a trespass, so that's not good, when trying to enforce laws, and you're breaking a bigger law than you're trying to enforce. That's just not right.
Uh, do you, you plan to tear that one down? Is that what you're saying?
Probably we're gonna tear that down, is, I haven't been inside it to check it, but I'm pretty sure I'm gonna take it out.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any questions to Mr. Priceock while he's here? None? Okay. If you would, step back, and I'll see if anyone else has any comments. Anyone else wishing to comment on this while it's open for a public hearing? Anyone else? And this is specifically, the address is 245 Ruth Road, same tax parcel number 159J-00-028.01. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And Officer Perez, you move to the third item? Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion among the board on this particular one at this time? All right. Move to the third item. Just keep going up and down.
This one is going to be 305 Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, 39759. Parcel number 159J-00-028.01. This is the deed showing ownership of the property. My first inspection was September 1st, 2023. I made photos from the first inspection, show the damages to the property. There are parts, parts of the roof that are caved in. There's almost complete overgrowth around the property. On September 5th, I sent an initial general nuisance letter to the property owner, notifying him of the violations. On October 16th, I did a second inspection, showing no improvements have been made to As you can see, there are broken panes of glass in the windows. That is the caved-in portion, part of the roof in the back. This is a certified letter, notifying of the change to dilapidated case, 211911, on October 27th. This is the notice of the public hearing, sent on November 9th. Postage of the public hearing notice at the City Hall on November 11th, as well as on the property on November 11th. It's the third inspection, showing that no changes have been made to the property. On November 25th, I did a final inspection, once again, showing no changes have been made to the property. And no contact had been made by the property owner.
Okay. And a lot of these pictures were taken from the road, or were, were you actually on the property at the time? Just to, just to talk about it.
I, I did enter the property. There were no postage of, no trespassing. There was no attempts from the property owner to communicate with me, so I did enter the property and take photos of the structures.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to be clear, as long as we were having this discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez, while she's here? Okay? If you would, step back. I'll open it as a public hearing. Mr. Priceock, you want to come speak to this particular piece of property as well?
Yeah. This, this one, the, there are windows and a bunch of material inside the property to replace all of that. And it's most interesting, I think the attorney needs to look up the thing, you don't have to have a no trespassing sign to trespass on people's property. And I was very surprised about that. But the Supreme Court says, when it's in the constitutional, it's just like the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. There's just, that's the way it is. So again, we have trespassing, and.
Okay. Anything else about the house, though? Your plans are to rehab it?
Oh, yeah. That, that one, just, it would have been done by now, had I not had the triple bypass.
Okay. So that goes back to construction issues. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing, anybody want to ask Mr. Priceock any questions? Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter now is the time, it's a public hearing? If you would, I'd like to speak to 305 Ruth Road, parcel number 159J-00-028.01. Anyone? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And Officer Perez, this will be the last one, I believe. And we'll set up for a little more round of viewing.
This is 325 Ruth Road, Starkville, Mississippi, 39759. Parcel number 159J-00-028.01. The deed showing ownership of the property. My first inspection was done on September 1st. The property shows the pieces of the front falling off, and holes in the roof. Overgrowth around the property. The backside of the property has completely collapsed in. There are spaces, there are spaces on this side where. There are spaces on this side where it is open to where animals can get in. This is the initial letter of general nuisance, sent to the property owner on September 5th, showing the violations, notifying him of the violations. Second inspection done on October 16th. Photos show that no progress has been made to make any changes. On October 27th, a second letter notifying the property owner that the case was changing to 211911, sent certified mail. On November 9th, I sent a public hearing notice to the property owner, certified mail, posted at City Hall on November 11th, as well as on the property on November 11th. Third inspection was done, showing no change had been made to the property. On November 25th, my final inspection, photos show that no change has been made to the property.
Okay. Just another point of clarification. How did you, I mean, part of what you do is you ride our streets and look for issues with code violations, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you have to enter the property to look at code violations associated with these properties, or did you note them as you were driving by?
I noted them as I was driving through.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of Officer Perez? Alden Rupp.
The last three properties we've seen, the houses are empty, abandoned.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's only someone living in the first one?
Yes, sir.
To your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else? Anything else? Okay. Mr. Priceock, would you like to come speak to this particular piece of property?
Yeah, I got a lot of material inside that one to fix that one up, too. And again, it says, "For the reasons discussed below, we agree that the city's warrantless search of the property was unconstitutional, and the board's decision must be set aside. Accordingly, we reverse and render the judgment of the Circuit Court and of the board's adjudication that the property is a public nuisance." Just thought y'all might be interested in those words from the Supreme Court. And again, we have trespassing.
So your plans for that piece of property is also to fix that one up?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that goes back to construction?
Yes.
And contractors and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a timeline that you have planned on to do that?
I had planned on the last one having it rented by now, and when all of this happened. And then, probably fix the apartments next.
Okay, all right. So can you provide, as we discuss this, can you provide the board some timeline in which you would then entertain a contractor to do it for you? Because I'm not thinking that it's, the level of construction that's needed for this would fall under a general, or less than a general contractor, since you're not living on it, it's commercial.
It's commercial, but it's not so big that you can't use a residential-type contractor. It's, there's a square footage requirement.
I knew you were not letting it go.
Well, I've also been a contractor in doing this type stuff, so.
Okay.
And it's interesting that the commercial guy from Jackson goes through and checks the city's things to see if a residential contractor is working on a big commercial building. So that's, I was the building official in West Point for a few years, so.
Okay, again, I knew you were knowledgeable. All right, thank you so much. All right, let me see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak to this particular address, 325 Ruth Road. Again, same parcel, 159J-00-028.01. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and that takes care of all four of the properties. Alden Rupp, you feel informed? Better informed?
I do. I don't, I don't see how you could fix all that in six months, given his health issue, so I'm not sure what the solution is.
Okay, well, we can address each one of them separately. We will address each one of them separately in a motion, so it would be a matter of how the board wishes to give Mr. Priceock time, if it wishes to do so, based on what we have. So Alden Beatty, I see your, I saw a deep breath there. It looks like it might have been prelude to a comment.
I would be willing, on the extended way, I think, okay, hear me now. On the extended way circumstances that Mr. Priceock has been faced with the last year, and is still facing with his health recovery and everything, that we give him a year to either have the properties brought up to code, renovate and brought to code, or if it's sold, and this would be, this would be to any successor owner, that by the same timeframe. And that that would be fair and reasonable to be, I mean, within a year, I would hope Mr. Priceock, you could get, figure a way to get this done. The biggest thing I see right now is a problem with a tenant in a building that, I don't see how many lives there. And if these properties, I mean, this is, you know, it's in good location, if these properties can be brought back up to code, this will be valuable property for you, but this, this stuff didn't get bad. It's been years getting in the conditions it's in now. And so I would be willing to extend that because of the extended way circumstances that you've been facing and that you will face, but at the same time, there has to be some timeline and some end to where either you would have the work done and it would be finished, or you would have, somebody, successor owner would have it and be under the same timeline to have this work completed and these properties brought up to code. May I yield? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this?
Is that in the form of a motion? Or is that?
Don't we have to take these one at a time?
We do have to take, we do have to take each one, one at a time. We had a separate public hearing, we have a separate address, so we want to address them one at a time. So the first one we are addressing will be the 201 Ruth Road, where the gentleman is living.
I think that's the most important one. I'd make a motion that Mr. Priceock have four months to get that habitable.
To make it have four months, four months, all right. I have a motion from Alden Rupp for a four-month, well, you're declaring it, you are declaring it dilapidated, but you're giving him four months in which to rectify the situation. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so, that, I need a second for that one, if there is one.
I'll second.
Second from Alden Brooks.
And could I say just one thing?
Of course you can.
About this.
Of course you can.
You know, I'm not an attorney. A lawyer already, law enforcement, official code enforcement, but I've been doing appraisals for 30 years. And we do drive-by appraisals from the road. We, you know, we stay in the road, and we take pictures of the property. And looking at the area, you know, some of these, you know, Ruth Road comes down, makes turn, comes around, some you can see front and back of, but, you know, we just make an extraordinary assumption that the exterior represents the interior. And I think that's pretty clear in this case, and the code enforcement officer simply stayed in the road, you know, and just showed us pictures from the road, and I don't think there's anything wrong with taking pictures from the road, because I've been doing it for 30 years. You know, you would still, I think we would all still reach the same conclusion, that we've got an issue here, you know. So, and I'm not sure what the law is about going on the property. I'm not, I don't even want to go there, because I'm not sure. But I know that you can, you know, you can look at this from the road, and it's our, that's what we're elected to do, and that's what our department does, is, you know, to try to maintain our city up to code, and, you know, again, you can clearly see this from the road. But the one with the individual living in it, I mean, that's, that's a pretty tough situation. I don't know that it can be done in four months, but I'll second Mr. Rupp's motion, Alden Rupp's motion to give him four months to try that. So we'll just see what it means.
All right, any other, any comments? Alden Brooks, I mean, I'm sorry, Alden Beatty, are you leaning forward for a comment?
I am. I think that one of the reasons probably, and I'm not going to speak for Officer Perez, but if I had been in some capacity in the code department, one of the reasons I would have gone on that premises, that first premises to begin with, is because of the concern, city's concern, code department's concern for the health, safety, and well-being of the tenant. And we've addressed properties inside city limits that have been, have gotten in bad shape, and moved forward with the condemnation of those properties, and seen that through to fruition, to complete demolition of some. And so, to me, that changes the whole thing right there, in the fact that our code officer sees a place, somebody that's got a car in front of it, and obviously somebody's living in, that's in not fit condition for a human being to live in. You said four months? Four months to be under construction, or four months to be completed?
I think I said four to be completed, but I'd be willing to amend the motion to say even under, just to get it started. And I say that in deference to the gentleman living there. He's been living that way for a long time, and no human should have to live like that.
So would you amend that to be under construction, under contract by the?
I amend my motion with all your second.
All right.
And I, will you second that?
Friendly amendment with a friendly second? You good with that? All right, to be under construction, with all the proper permits, et cetera, associated with being under construction. Is that accurate?
I second.
Okay. All right, so I do have a motion amended. I'm sorry, Ms. Harden, do you have that?
Do.
Okay, with a, with a second that is, that goes with that, and I want to say...
What's the motion?
I'm sorry, the motion was four months to be under construction, with all the proper permits, to have begun construction, to make it habitable for the gentleman who is currently residing there. And that was amended to reflect the under construction as opposed to complete it. Okay? And I do want to say, I am disappointed that someone would be living in those conditions, particularly for someone who has great knowledge about construction and building and safety and health and that sort of thing, and someone who has obviously an investment in this community. So I am, I think four months is extremely reasonable, so. All right, anyways, any other discussion before we have a vote on this particular item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's, that's, all right. Alden Carver, you were a nay. Vice Mayor Perkins, you were a nay.
Yes, ma'am.
And Alden Rupp, Alden Brooks, Alden Beatty, and Alden Vaughn were yeas. Is that correct? So it passes by four to two. All right. Next item is the 245 Ruth Road. If you recall, that parcel, I believe that's the one, hmm, can we pull that up just so that we make sure? That's going to be the downside of having, having gone through them and then come back to them, so we make sure we're talking about the right, remembering the right one.
It's the right one, 245.
Yeah.
That's the right one, ten down.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. So this is, this is the one that he was going to demolish anyway, so that might change how you give a timeline, so. All right, any comments, any discussion at this point in time? Alden Brooks, I see you're...
A question, yeah, on this one, since he's, says he's going to demolish this one anyway, and obviously because of health issues. I'm asking this, is this something that maybe the fire department could get involved in?
Absolutely. Well, I say that, they have to evaluate it and make sure that it is something they check for asbestos first, and then a, and then a burning, but that would be, again, subject to what the board's decision is and how Mr. Priceock views that opportunity.
He'd probably want to tear this one down.
Right, I understand.
And that might, might...
That would save the demolition piece, anyway.
Mr. Priceock, you'd be amenable to that? Mr. Priceock, you'd be amenable to that? Fire Department helping you take care of that second one?
I've thought about that, to make it easy to get rid of it.
If we could, if the fire department could work with you, you'd be amenable to that.
Okay, now, well, any, any discussion from the board? So there is an opportunity for chief? That is something that y'all could check the asbestos on, and then see if it is one of the ones that would be available to do that to?
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Okay, and you can...
It's one that is not going to be taken.
Okay, all right. If the board wants to make an order of that nature, then that's something the board could do.
Move approval.
Alden Vaughn?
I'm making a motion, move approval.
Okay, move approval of finding this a dilapidated property and authorizing the fire department?
Yes, ma'am.
To analyze it and potentially burn it. Is that, is that accurate?
I'm making a motion.
Alden Beatty? To expand on that, if it has, indeed has asbestos and we can't burn it, what would your time?
Well, we can mitigate asbestos.
We can't?
Yeah, we can, we have a mitigation, there is a mitigation process for asbestos. We've done it in a number of cases.
Burn it back?
I'm sorry? No, 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 no. But there is, there is a company that does mitigation for it.
Exactly, what you're going for there.
So, yes, we can determine that, and then, of course, there is a cost of mitigation, but, but we can make that determination, so. Okay, all right. So Alden Vaughn, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alden Brooks. All right, and that is immediately?
Ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. So that, and that is action to burn, have the fire department determine the status of the building, mitigate asbestos, and then burn?
That's it.
Alden Vaughn, thank you. I have a motion, and I have a second from Alden Brooks. If you would, please, well, we'll do it, we'll do an acclamation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous, motion carries, thank you. All right, next one is 305 Ruth Road, which is the one that apparently is potentially available for reconstruction. Picture, there we go. We got, we got that code number down, don't we? Okay, so recollection of that one? All right, so any conversation about this one? Alden Beatty?
I'm making a motion.
You want to make, okay, what motion was you making?
Six months, under contract, under some type of contract, and consistent with our codes and regulations.
Okay, I have a motion from Alden Beatty for a six-month extension, still a finding of it being dilapidated, correct? And six-month extension. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alden Carver. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I have a five to one vote. It does carry, so that would be six months on the address of 305 Ruth Road, and, and that is with, that is with all proper permits, et cetera. And last but not least, is 325 Ruth Road. We'll pull that one up as well, okay? And this also is one that supposedly would be under, would be reconstructed, I believe. So any discussion about this one? Okay? I'm going to need a motion of some kind.
Same, same motion.
Same motion, six months?
Six months, to be under contract.
To be under, under contract, under construction?
Under construction with all the current regulations, all ready to take care of.
All right, I have a six-month motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alden Carver. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have, that is a unanimous, I apologize, that's a majority, five to one vote, so. All right, that covers, that covers those items. Yes, Alden Brooks?
I just wanted to make sure that we did not attack the messenger. I appreciate the job Officer Perez does, and that we have tasks to do, so I don't want this to be a reflection on, on your work. You're doing what you've been asked to do.
Officer Perez, you do an outstanding job. You've done all your eyes, so you've done an outstanding job, I appreciate your work.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Moving on to the next one, we have a claim statute. Do I have a motion?
Do it, please.
Alden Brooks, thank you so much. Second from Alden Rupp. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. We are down to, Alden Carver stepped out, so it's three to two, motion carries. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session, or, I'm sorry, to go into closed determination session to determine the need for an executive session.
So move.
I have a motion from Alden Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Alden Rupp, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.